Ms. Janice, we're ready to go. All right, good morning. Let me welcome each of y'all up to the Rankin County Board of Supervisors January 2nd meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll begin 2018 with an invocation from Mr. Slay if you don't mind.
Well, I thank you. You are the God of new mercies every day. We come before you right now to start this year. We ask you, Lord, for your mercy and your grace upon us. Thank you, Lord, for how you bless and so love us. Thank you for these gentlemen, Lord, the sacrifices that they make so that they might lead this community. Pray that you give them wisdom that they need, Lord. Help them to be discerned and help them to understand, Lord, the real issues, the vital issues that need their attention, the attention of this community. Father, I pray that you would encourage each of us to serve our community with all of the skills that you've given us, and, Lord, in a way that shows our gratitude for you and what you do for us. Father, I thank you for our first responses, and, Lord, we can't make it without them. I pray, Father, that you would keep them safe. We're proud of this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Great, thank you, Mr. Slay. Item three is going to begin with public comments and recognition, and we're honored this morning, and we're going to start things off with recognition of Mr. Baxter Burns. And Mr. Baxter Burns has been a true representation of what good people are in Rankin County. His willingness to serve for the last 20 years for the Rankin First Board under the Board of Supervisors has truly been a large asset to Rankin County and the citizens here. You know, a lot of the growth and development that's happened over the last 20 years in Rankin County falls on a lot of good people we have on that Rankin First Board. Some of the great leadership we have there with Noel Daniels and the Vice Chairman of that Board and Committee, Mr. Baxter Burns. So Baxter, if you would, unfortunately, you're moving. If you would've come up front, we're going to present you with some stuff. Mr. Slay's got a resolution for you, but Mr. Sullivan, I think it's going to freeze your tax liens on your house where you can't move out of Rankin County. So, Mr. Sullivan, if you don't mind, you can go ahead and get that started. But if we could, we're all going to come down front and join you. Mr. Slay, read something to you. Tom, if you want to come up. Noel, also, from the same side. We'll all come down here to front. Regina, from Rankin First Board. We got you a little shadow box here. We appreciate you. I know it's nothing as fabulous or as nice probably as you deserve, but we'd like to give you that right there and say thank you for your time.
I appreciate it.
You bring your wife and grandson Regina up here, and Ray, he's already also a Rankin First. Come up here and get some shots. Chuck's coming to make some good pictures. Slay's going to read us the resolution we've got for you, Baxter.
Mr. Baxter, I've had the pleasure of getting to know you over several years working with Rankin First Board. This is a resolution that's been commissioned by the Board of Supervisors. I'm going to read it. We just want to say thank you so much for your service to Rankin County, and hopefully this resolution will capture in the spirit that's intended. This is a resolution before the Board condemning and congratulating Jay Baxter Burns for 23 years of loyal services to the citizens of Rankin County as a member of the Board of Directors for the Rankin First Economic Development Authority. Whereas the Rankin County Board of Supervisors has consistently recognized Rankin First Economic Development Authority as a critical component part of our county government that emphasizes the economic impact of businesses and industrial operations that Rankin County remains a desirable place to work and earn a living. Whereas the Rankin First Economic Development Authority as the agency with primary oversight responsibility for economic development activity in Rankin County has been a consistent partner with Rankin County Board of Supervisors in seeking to make Rankin County a more desirable location for business and industrial partners. Whereas in recognizing the importance of Rankin First to Rankin County, the Supervisors have sought to place honorable and qualified individuals on the Board of Directors of Rankin First Economic Development Authority. Whereas one of these honorable and qualified individuals is Jay Baxter Burns, who was appointed by the Rankin County Board of Supervisors as a member of the Board of Directors for Rankin First in 1994. Mr. Burns brought to Rankin First his years of experience serving as a leader of Ergon Asphalt Emulsion Zine. Mr. Burns put his degree from Mississippi State University in industrial, I'm sorry, in engineering technology to good use with Ergon and quickly rose through the ranks of the company until he reached the Office of the President in 2011. Whereas Jay Baxter Burns has faithfully served as a member of the Rankin First Economic Development Authority for nearly 23 years, rising to the post of Vice President and Chairman of the East Metro Center Committee. During his tenure, Mr. Burns has been a faithful proponent of important economic development projects for Rankin County that resulted in the creation or maintenance of thousands of jobs and tens of millions of dollars in business development for the county. Now, therefore, it's resolved that the Rankin County Board of Supervisors congratulates and commends Rankin County and Jay Baxter Burns on 23 years of loyal, dedicated, and exemplary service to the citizens of Rankin County as a member of the Board of Directors for Rankin First. And that's resolved. This is the second date, January 2018. Mr. Burns is signed by all of the Supervisors and on behalf of the Chancellor of Clerk, Mr. Slayes. I've got this for you. Just want to say congratulations and thank you for the job.
If I could say just one word. Our founder, Chairman Founder, 93-years-old, Mr. Les Lampkin, I think he, one thing's for sure, when he decided to move our offices 23 years ago, I believe pretty sure that he could move our world headquarters anywhere in America. And he chose Rankin County. And still to this day, he tells his sons how proud he is to come across that river and be in Rankin County. And so it was an honor and a pleasure to serve Rankin County.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter.
Don't be here a while, Bob. Yeah, I saw that. You better enjoy it this week because I think that Bulldog tie coming on next week.
All right, again, thank you, Mr. Burns, for your years of service. Item number three under public comments and recognition is Mike Ward, EOC Director. Mike, good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year to you.
And Happy New Year to you guys. I don't crash this thing getting over here. I'm good at that. Good morning. What we're back for today is to a couple...
Yeah, we were just waiting.
Okay. A couple of weeks ago, I left you a copy of the contract from Motorola. And today, just in case you have any technical questions for any of the people that be at Motorola that I can't answer, we've got Carl Arnt, he's been a project director, you guys know him as well. He's been an engineer, he's the current account sales manager for Motorola. We've got Paul Merritt, our area sales manager, obviously with Motorola, and Mr. Bill Roberts, the owner of Jackson Communications, who is our own site, people that come out and do all of our service workforce. So a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Wedgworth came in and dropped this off to you, but we had some, it's had some issues and just some basic questions about the contract, kind of what did it cover, what did it not? And at that point, you told us to go back and take another look at it. We did. Slay had some questions about it as well. I had a couple of questions about a couple of elements on it, and I believe we've got those cleared up. The biggest one, and I gave you guys a copy of this, I hope you've had a chance to go over it. Almost line number one on the actual contract talks about administration. And you'll see the monthly in the line-out charge on that. I was very concerned that that was more than likely, when you say administrative, I'm thinking that's attorney fees or something like that to put into this. That is not what that is. On the administration side, that is the sheriff's compass com for all of his radios, all of his GPS compass. That is that portion. They only have about six or seven line items when they do their contracts, and anything that's ancillary to that goes into administration. So if we had a contract, which we do not, with our microwave systems, that would fall under administration as well. So I don't want you to be misled and think that that is what the layperson would call an administration because it's truly not. On the paper that I gave you, that you have in front of you now, I kind of broke that down and make a little bit more sense out of what this thing covers. On the second page over there, I put some notes that I think will pretty well hammer it down. On this maintenance contract, if you enter into this, which you have in the past, what this does is makes us a priority customer. And a priority customer essentially is exactly what it says. Should something happen to any of our communication systems whatsoever that's covered under the contract, we make one phone call and we've got one of several things that are going to happen. We've got people in Schaumburg, Illinois that are either going to remote, try to get some patches going with it, they're going to be doing software upgrades, or they're going to make a phone call to Jackson Communications and we're going to actually have boots on the ground. With that being said, once that is initiated and we have people coming to Rankin County to work on our radio system for whatever reason, let's say a neighboring county has the same situation happens. We are a priority customer because we have the contract. If they made the phone call first because their system was down, Jackson Com, everybody's headed their direction, as they pull in the parking lot, ours goes down, since we're a priority customer, they turn around in the parking lot, come straight to Rankin County. That is the biggest thing on this maintenance contract. It is monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, to the point if you so much as even open a door on any of our tower sites, there's alarms that goes off in Schaumburg. Any of our PS apps, if a dispatcher was to take a jump drive and stick it into a port on any of our PS apps, it sends an alert to Schaumburg, Illinois, where they can isolate it and shut anything down that needs to be if it was infected with some type of a virus. I do want to lead you down to the next to the last bullet. Year-to-date, we've had over 137 alarms. Now, what is an alarm? That's something that has happened. All of these are monitored by Schaumburg. Something's got a little hiccup in it, it throws up a red flag, and immediately they go in to start researching to figure out what is going on with it. So on an average, we've had about 11 or 12 issues a month that have resulted in either a successful remote conclusion of the event, they were able to upload patches, software, something to that effect, or we had boots on the ground, or a combination of all of those, that we actually had boots on the ground at one of our tower sites or our PS app. So 11 to 12 times a month, and again, this is a brand-new system, but it's very, very complex and it's very, very technical. So having those people to monitor that is a huge, huge thing. The very last bullet I want to bring to your attention is down at the, over the three-year term, and this is a three-year instead of a one-year term. Stretching it out over three years has resulted in a cost savings to Rankin County in the neighborhood of about $150,000 if we go with the three-year term versus a one-year term. So a very, very substantial savings on that. There are some things that are not covered under this contract, and I want to make sure that you are aware of those. It does not cover any type of microwave transmission equipment. We do have the ability to put a contract on that. Motorola has run the numbers on it, they've contacted the people that are the authorized dealers for our particular microwaves, and the best deal that we can get is a cost plus. So it's really cost prohibitive to put a maintenance contract on our microwaves due to the fact that they're two decades old. We do have one tower site that took a lightning hit back in August. Obviously, it's got brand-new microwaves, transmit and receive. Cato also received a receiving side and the EOC received a receiving side. Just because of the way that these things are configured now, that's the way that you have to do it. I'll be bringing a plan to you a little later on in the year of being able to update once a year on all of our tower sites instead of hitting the Board of Supervisors with a, you know, a $1 million expenditure when we can pace this thing out since it's working to this point. Also, we've got about 3,800 radios in the county. Those individual radios are not covered under the maintenance contract. They are not. They could be, but they are not in this particular contract. With as many radios as we have, it's fairly expensive to do that.
Mike, hang on a second.
Yes, sir.
At the time we purchased these radios, what is the warranty on them?
Three years. Two years.
Are we outside of that now, close to it?
Yes, should be. Should be. Another thing that is not...
Hey, Mike, let me stop you one more time. Same thing on Jay's point. If we're right there on the edge of that warranty going out, it might be smart just to double-check. If we got problems, now's the time to let us know. If you don't, then you've got that sandwich, you know?
Got it. We'll take care of that.
Glad you brought that up.
Another thing that's not, that is not covered under the maintenance contract is flash upgrades for radios. For example, if some of the volunteer fire departments, or anyone else for that matter, was to go and, these radios are very expensive, they were to find one on eBay that they could get fairly cheap that they're going to use personally, that radio is not configured for our system. Could it be? Yes, if it's P-25 compliant, but it's got to be flash, it's got to be a flash upgrade. That's not covered. They would have to incur that cost with Jackson Communications themselves. None of that is covered on our radios. So I just want you to be aware that it's not 100% inclusive. There are some things that are not included in the contract. This is basically the tower sites and the actual Motorola communications that's covered in this thing. And again, the biggest thing is we've got about $150,000 in savings on the three-year term. I know Slay had a, Mr. Slay had a question on, one sentence on the contract itself. We had a meeting with Homer Lancaster, and we actually sat down and I believe was able to explain what that verbiage meant to him, and I'm not going to speak for Mr. Slay, but I'll let him speak to that. If he's good with that, I believe he is, but we'll let him make that determination to the board. So, all right.
Makes it good.
So, and I apologize for this taking several weeks and lots of meetings to get this done.
One of those things Jay mentioned also was the...
The car radios.
Yeah.
Not the mobiles, but the actual end dash car radios.
Yeah, they are not covered on the contract.
Okay. Those might be a little bit newer, right? I think those...
No, I'm talking, we bought mostly hand-hails.
I thought the car radios were newer. I thought we bought those in the last, during our term, did we not? The car radios?
Mr. Roberts, you know, the large percentage of the hand-hails.
I know we lost some, but I think generally the bulk of it.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Merritt may be able to address that for us.
I think I can help. On the different mobiles for if it's the SO or different municipalities, they've been purchased at different times throughout the year. So we offered, you know, a discount up until a certain time during, I think it was 2015, a discount until everyone actually purchased the radios to get onto the new system. So the different municipalities or agencies, they ball them throughout the different years, so not all at one time. The system sale that you guys did years ago was for the actual components of the working system, communication system, not necessarily the end-user equipment, all those.
Okay. All right. Paula, have we ever had warranty on those?
On the radios?
Yeah.
No.
What is the likelihood of those? How long can we have one survive?
So a lot of those you actually had on the old system, where some of them were 15 to 20 years old.
Okay.
So, I mean, the chances of a radio, it's, I would rather you guys spend the money for the system instead of the radios, and if the municipalities want to, you know, use that and do that themselves on the radios that they purchased, then that could be something that you could look at too, instead of putting that all under one umbrella.
I guess.
Thank you.
Our radios are pretty robust. Just to give you an example, two hand-hails, Mr. Harrison's got one that has been almost totally submerged in water, still working today. Had one that one of our volunteer firefighters obviously left on the back of a truck, landed on the middle of the highway and was ran over and still works. Now, obviously, he is, he's taken care of with Jackson Com on all the repair for that, but it actually be run over by a vehicle coming off the side of a truck at 45 miles an hour and still working, pretty impressive.
All right, thank you, Mike. Do we need action on that contract or is that further? Doesn't say action on the agenda. Okay. Under additional business, we'll add it for that? Okay. All right, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Y'all good? All right, moving on to old business. Board wish to entertain a motion for minutes approval.
So moved.
And a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item four passes. Item five, consent agenda.
So moved.
And a motion by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item five passes. Item six, Mr. Sullivan, Happy New Year to you.
First item, petition change the assessment of 2017 real and personal property assessments.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item A passes. Item B, Mr. Sullivan.
Petition to adjust the 2017 home state exemption supplement rule.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item B passes. Item C.
Request for the authorization of the Board Attorney to seek the court order aborting the 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17 tax sales and refund tax sale purchaser for PIN number 43828. The aforementioned parcel does not exist and has been erroneously assessed.
So moved.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item D, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, this is something that we became aware of that I think ever since Rankin County has been doing this, that we've been doing it wrong.
Oh, am I paying it?
So now we're correcting, we're moving forward doing it the right way.
You guys do not have the authority to void a tax sale where the redemption period has expired, according to your Attorney General.
Okey-dokey. What are we doing?
We're fixing it.
We're getting a court order.
You're going to get me to get a judge to do that.
Yeah.
All right. So Board wish to entertain a motion for item D.
So moved.
And a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Item seven, Ms. Herring. Happy New Year to you, Ms. Herring. How are you doing?
I have one item this morning, and my question approval of heart inner sifakas soul sores for the components, software, and support of the Verity voting systems. And this, I have a quote, they need V-drives and Verity keys. That's why this is coming up.
Okay. Board wish to entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Why are we buying stuff now? Why didn't we buy this originally?
I'm not real sure. You would have to ask the Election Commission, but it's $9,545 worth of stuff they need for the upcoming elections.
What was the issue we had on the election stuff here?
Software.
They got that fixed?
We're working on it.
What happens on those V-drives, what I understand from Michelle, is that they're what's coded for an election, and if there's any kind of runoff, they can't, I don't know the term, rewrite over those. They have to keep them over here and do new ones because this is their readable material. So in case of runoff, they have to have another set of them.
So we're just buying another set? Okay.
That's the purpose of it, that is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item A passes. Thank you, Ms. Herring. Mr. Mike Harrison.
I make motion approve. We're work accomplished and we're road work schedules.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Motion A passes. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Happy New Year.
Take it easy on that radio.
Mike, Mike, did you hear what Jay said?
Take it easy on that radio. You ain't been there two years, man.
I think that was a ninety-dove head first into the storm drain, not flogging it when we're flooded.
Oh, man.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Parker, I was expecting to call you up to the stand, but you're flashy this 2018.
Oh, man, I'm ready. Yes, sir. Don't go overboard.
Item nine.
Thank you. First item I have on the agenda is Greenfield Crossing Part III. I'm recommending approval of that final plat, and we have a letter of credit in the attorney's hands for $76,291.82.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item A passes. Item B, Mr. Parker.
Cedar Creek, I'm recommending approval of those construction plans.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item C.
Thank you. Fallen oak, Phase 1, I'm recommending approval of those construction plans.
I'll leave it. I don't know where that is, but I'll leave it.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item D.
And just for your information, Mr. Morrow, that's out of Highway 25.
Okay, that's Mr. Gaines.
East out of 25 and south of Stone.
He was about to say it. He just stole it. They just don't know what's going on there.
He jumps quick. He jumps quick on the flip. Item D, Mr. Parker.
Item D, thank you. Sawgrass Lakes, Part II, and I'm recommending approval of those construction plans.
So moved. I do recognize that one.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Happy New Year to you.
Same to you.
Item 10, Mr. Slay. Good morning again.
I make a motion. We take A, B, and C together, please.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Take items A, B, and C. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item A, B, and C pass. So item D for public hearings, Mr. Slay.
This is a public hearing on the Doris Williams Conditional Use Permit 134 Hidden Ranch Road. This is in District 1. Ms. Williams is seeking a conditional use permit to place a small family cemetery on her property at 134 Hidden Ranch Road. This is a 74.92 acre parcel zoned RE1A. The cemetery will be 0.614 acres. Maximum number of plots will be 20. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Doris Williams Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. This time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Make motion approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. Item D passes. Item E, under other business, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir. This is a, I termed it as a reinitiation of a discussion on the adoption program as on the adoption program as part of the county's animal control procedures. Uh, this goes back into the last board. There was a good bit of discussion that went on about incorporating an adoption facility as a part of our animal control procedures. Uh, and that, uh, there was a good bit of discussion with a, a nonprofit organization that had been developing. Several local veterinarians were a part of that activity and discussion. Uh, it got sort of deep into the process and then it just went away. I think there were some issues with the nonprofit that went on that the board was not comfortable continuing the process. And so it just sort of ended at that. Uh, but it is, it has never fully left the radar screen. Uh, there's always been this pressure to look for an adoption option for our county as a part of our animal control. And so that has resurfaced again. And so, uh, Mr. Morrow has been pretty active in getting this reinitiated. So I'm gonna let Bob speak to that issue and so far how those discussions have been going on and maybe just guide us down through this discussion.
I'd gotten pushed back probably several months ago for some folks in my district about our lack of participation in the adoption arena. So I went down, talked to Brian, went down, talked to Justin, his folks, and sat down with Brian, and we talked about limited facility that he's got down there to do an outstanding job, given the circumstances that they've got. And trying to see, and he's made a comment, Brian is also, and I'll let him go in more detail if I miss something here. Now, he's looking for something to, to incorporate big animals with as well, that he has to pick up, maybe an additional barn or something to, to help facilitate that issue in conjunction with this adoption facility. The way we envision it would work would be is that the existing building down there would still be used to bring the, the animals in. If it was in, if, if the animal was classified as adoptable, it would be moved over to the new facility. And at that point in time, the 501(c) would take it and administer and do everything it is to do. They would, they would operate the, the adoption facility. The county would build the building, uh, and build the warehouses back behind it that, or the barn that the sheriff would need. And we would work into a private-public partnership with the 501(c) to facilitate. Uh, and that all sounds great and punky dory and stuff, but we have no clue costs, have no clue how it's gonna all lay out. But that's kinda, correct if I'm wrong, Craig, it's kinda where we are today. I've talked to one of the vets that's still on the board of the 501(c). They're very enthusiastic with the idea and they have much better shape today. And that problem in the past wasn't issued ahead with that director at that time, but they, he sits no longer with them. But they're very enthusiastic. Uh, I see this as a problem that's not gonna go away for Rankin County. I mean, right now Brian handles everything except what, Richland and, uh, and Pearl maybe, or Richland Florence?
Well, and now, I guess with the budget, they're maybe getting calls after hours. Well, I think responding to some of the CDs, so a lot of times after hours, that's something that's one of the areas.
So, you know, we may even, actually may think of the entire county, but I think right now Richland and Pearl, somebody over at Pearl maybe go on to Jackson, since it's closer actually to the, to the facility over there and thing. But, long story short, kinda like the problem we got of caught out. Population grows, so grows our, our pet population problem. And I think this is a, something that needs to be addressed. I mean, obviously I'm not looking to, to railroad and, and start it and boom, get down here in a month. But I just wanna get the board's temperature. Are you interested in, in trying to see if there's a solution to this problem? Or if you're not, that's fine too. I mean, I just, I just need some direction before we spend any more time, you know, to move forward, if there's an avenue to move forward too.
I wanna make another, let's talk about another issue that we're having and we're catching a lot of flack over it is, you know, it's just like, uh, at the, you know, you gotta have your cottage paper and all stuff, you bring a horse up there and everything. When we build a new pound, not the adoption, but pound, we need a, a stray area and then a healthy dog area. Cause you get picked, a loose animal has a collar on them, goes to have the dog. We're mixing these animals together. We got some sick animals and the, the healthy animals getting sick from the sick animals. So we need like a, a cleaned area and then stray area, you know, where, of course, the strays are the ones we try to go through and get adopted out. But, you know, somebody has a good healthy dog that come out there and some of them get sick from the pound.
Oh, yeah.
So I just kinda went to the discussion.
I mean, uh, uh, because I don't have any knowledge or anything. Who would be the 501(c) or just, is there anything?
Who I talked to was Jim Anderson and, uh, business with him and him and Gary.
But I mean, it'd be a local. It wouldn't be something.
No, no, it would be a local, Rankin County based 501(c). Craig, we would have to satisfy ourselves to the leadership, have to satisfy ourselves in a lease agreement that we have the power to step in and, and remove them, do what need, and that's the only thing I really don't care for. But I don't see, I'm trying to solve the problem that y'all had back when y'all first looked at it. Last thing we wanna do is increase payroll as a result of doing this. So that was kinda my solution to the issue, was allow the 501(c) to handle the adoption side, you know, and that would prevent us from having to really increase any more people. Sheriff would still have his folks having to pick up animals. But as far as the adoption process, we would have a 501(c) in place to handle that. And that would be their responsibility. Ultimately though, it would fall back on us in case the 501(c) defaulted or fell apart or whatever the case may be.
One is something else though that, what, a couple of hiccups when we looked at that. That's been several years ago. It seemed like it was more than just that one thing.
Yes, sir. Uh, if you recall Jared, the initial discussions with the prior 501(c)(3) organization, uh, uh, called for that organization to actually construct the facility.
Yeah.
And so they were trying to raise funds.
Okay.
And that was too much of a lift for that organization.
Now, I think that's, I know you go have that same problem today. I mean, I, you know, especially I love to see somebody go out and raise the funds to do it.
Yeah.
It is our responsibility to, to get the dogs. And that facility down there that Brian's been using for the last 20, 30 years was never built nor is it designed to handle what's going on today.
Bob, my concern is, I know we'll have the vets' participation on doing the parts that they need to do. But my major concern is actually having the manpower here every day that the facility's gonna be open to operate it.
Well, that's, that's gonna be something we, I think the sheriff is.
I got a suggestion on that. Number one, I don't want any inmates around the public.
Right.
I have all kinds of people wanting to come volunteer for pound. I want them to come down there cause there's inmates down there tending the animals. So that's why we have a pound back there with the inmates taking care of the animals and all of them down there with them. Then after five o'clock, the animals that are selected for the adoption center, the inmates take the animals up there, they clean the adoption center and everything. So the next morning, the volunteers, all these people on volunteer, they can come in, open it up, adopt the animals all day long. And after five, when everybody leaves, inmates come in, clean up, put the animals in, feed that, whatever needs to be done during, after hour. So there will be an inmate around, a volunteer. I say the whole thing, be run by volunteers.
So we would need to have a, you know, some way of knowing that we're gonna have people here to run.
Well, and it may be our suggestion, Craig, here as opposed to, and we can make this, this, what we've got on the agenda contingent on us flushing the 501(c) first or having a sit down. We, we really have not had a sit down, quote unquote, with the 501(c). I talked to Jim Anderson. He just said on behalf of them that they would be excited about it. And I said, that's fine. We'll get back to it. Need to get the board's temperature first to see whether or not we would get enough temperature to move that part forward. But maybe we sit down with, if, if the boards agreeable to their subject to us getting our hands better around the 501(c), so who they are, what they're, you know, get a better idea of what that 501(c), who it is, you know, and stuff like that.
Well, before you go, gentlemen, I said we all agreeable to, we need an idea of what size of building and what we're looking at.
And that's what, that's what the architect's gonna be helpful to.
I think the discussion side of it's definitely something to proceed on. Let's see if we can make it work.
I mean, we'd have to go a different location. There's not enough room.
Yeah, there is. I think there is. We've got about 10 acres down there, about 12 acres. I looked at the tax maps last night, meant to print it off. You actually could take your, your waste management facility, Mike, and probably maybe move it to the back, further back. And you've got all that in front of the, the dog pound there, where you could probably put the adoption center and stay on that 10 or 12 acres that the county has. You know, we gave the 20 acres, or we exchanged 20 acres to the south with the city of Brandon. Don't think we need to get on their property based on what I've seen. But that's something else we're gonna have.
There is 20 acres down there?
Well, there is, but the county, the city has. We swapped this as part of the deal we did with.
How much do we have?
I'd say about 10 or 12 acres in that tax map.
I, I didn't know it was that much down there. I thought we were on three or four acres.
I'm talking about large animal. We need some kind of pasture.
Yeah, right.
At least that, yep.
And it, and it could be, I mean, I, I feel like we can get the, the joint, some, uh, some acreage from the city that joins us because right now they, they're looking at putting a dog park in that 20 acres anyway. Plus they have found out they've got wetlands in that area too. So they may not be doing anything with that property. And we may not be either if it turns out that wetlands area is what we need. But, uh, but, but answer your question, Steve. I think, I think it is. I think there is, but that's kind of, that's one of those next questions that the, the architect will help answer to say based on this.
About a land out on shallow. I mean, cause we were talking about even having a, a firing range for police officers. I mean, you could make, you know, one big, I mean, that's just a thought. Uh. 20. Could you use one place as a small animal, like where you're at, and the other place as a large animal? And then have the firing range there? Because what most people don't know is we don't really have a firing range that's, but anyhow, it is a great discussion. I think we need to keep moving forward.
All right. Hey Craig, I think I'll go with this, uh, that's, uh, let's see what we got here. Potential action, that's also include, uh, how you wanna phrase the 501(c) conversation to kinda?
I think that just needs to be information gathering with a report back.
Okay. Don't need any kind of motion for that or just proceed on and discuss?
We, we don't need a motion. Uh, you, we need just instruction, uh, as to, I would assume that you would like for Mr. Morrow to sort of lead on that. He's been, that's what driving is.
Anybody have an objection to that?
No.
Objection, I think we just need to.
More information.
Look more before we jump too deep into this.
And I would, and I think that next step is to sit down the 501(c) in the next maybe 15 days. Maybe get back, you know, with the board before the 16th meeting to see, this is, these are, these are the principles of the 501(c). These are the people that are prepared to stand the path.
Add more, just to grow. I, I'm, I'm a little worried about it growing to where we can't get away and we gotta keep adding to and.
Bunny.
We need to kind of.
And, and I'm for sure have a local, because some of these national animal people are not what they seem to be.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and can get way out of hand.
May not understand the local dynamics.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Morrow. We'll proceed on that way.
One, one thing that I would suggest is that, um, some of this is gonna be chicken or egg. Uh, I think it needs to be, we need to have the, the ability to let the proposed 501(c)(3) know that it will not be their responsibility, under the current process that we are envisioning. They're not gonna be responsible, responsible for building the facility.
Yeah.
So.
They might.
From a, from a, from the standpoint of outlining the process to the 501(c)(3), we need to be able to tell them that the county is serious about, if we can get all the pieces in place, the county is serious about a process that would require the county to construct the facility and the 501(c)(3) to operate the adoption program. Are y'all comfortable presenting it that way, even though you're not making a commitment?
Yeah.
You're presenting it that way?
Yeah, cause I'm just afraid. I do wanna make sure what their, you know, their vision is, is not a little further out there than maybe ours or what we can really handle. And that's, I think that's.
Right. I think what we've saw in the past though is that when we, when we put the burden of construction on the organization, it just is not gonna go anywhere.
Yeah.
So I, I think the solution's gonna end up being the county providing the facility at the right place and the organization operating the facility under a lease arrangement. So the county would own the building, county would control the building, the 501(c)(3) would be responsible for operating the program. All right. So that's how we presented. There's no commitment. That's how we presented to them and tried to get buy-in there and then come back and report back to you guys.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Slay. Item F.
Okay. This is a consideration of a potential action to approve a resolution authorizing me to file an eminent domain case related to the acquisition of right of way along Gunner Road. We've got one particular property owner there. I will tell you that what we're dealing with here is a property owner who has, who has apparently no capacity and a family member who's attempting to represent them. And so it's a, a little bit of a trick bag. The family member believes that they ought to be more aggressive. If it was their own property, they'd probably easily arrange for us to be able to secure the property. But, uh, they're having to do this on behalf of a brother who may not be fully engaged. So it's a difficult situation. It's left us with no other option, in my opinion, than to go ahead and try to do a quick take on this. So you're only approving a resolution that Daniel was signing saying we need to move forward with an eminent domain case and secure this right away.
I beg that motion. Actually got a motion by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign?
By the way, that, uh, the, the acquisitions are going well. We're not meeting any kind of real resistance. So this is really the only one that's popped up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Slay.
After that, I'd like to note, I'd like to give you that information later.
Item number 11, Ms. Oster. Happy New Year to you.
Thank you. First item, I have the authority to pay JH&amp;H Architect, Planners, Interiors for, uh, services in the amount of $197.38 for the courthouse facilities. An authority issued that check is for reimbursables.
It's Carl here picking up the hat.
He is. He wants that large sum.
He must need it.
You mean we're having to pay him? I thought they were doing this for.
I'll make that motion for.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item A passes. Item B.
This is the acceptance of the Supreme Court Administrative Order on December the 4th of 2017, appointing family master David L. Morrow, Jr. for the services beginning January 1 of 18 through June 30th of 2018 and to compensate him at $2,500 per month, as entered in the order of the chance record on December 4th.
All right. So got a motion to approve by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. A, and Jessica on the thing, I'll abstain from that vote, please. Thank you. Item C, Ms. Oster.
Thank you. Um, authority for the board president to execute the construction agreement with Flagstar Construction for the new county, Rankin County misdemeanor facility. Y'all have any questions? Carl is here to answer them.
So moved.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. Morrow?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item C passes. Item D.
Authority to approve the Rankin County personnel policy, and I did make the changes requested last time.
Let's do it.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item 12, additional business to be discussed.
Um, the additional business is the discussion of a potential action to amend the Rankin County extension building rental policies and procedures to increase the amount of rental fee to 225 and require proof of residency for Rankin County rate at the time of, and action to amend the Greenfield Community Center rules to increase the amount of rental fee to 150 for general and 100 for residents that live within the fire district.
So much sprue. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item A passes. Any other additional business needs to be brought up on the, uh?
Motorola contract.
Words, uh, Motorola contract.
Motion to approve.
So the, a motion to add the Motorola contract to the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. And a motion to approve by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item passes. Anything else under additional business, Ms. Oster, Mr. Slay?
Just one thing to, it's, it's by way of information. Anybody that wants to sit in or participate is welcome to. Uh, at 11 o'clock, uh, Representatives Wagner will be here. Uh, Representatives of our, uh, consulting group with Brenetti will be here at 11 to talk about the drainage study, the countywide drainage study. And so if y'all are interested, that meeting will be here at 11 o'clock.
What's the, what's the purpose of that again?
That's for those groups to get together and discuss cooperation as it relates to funding.
Oh, okay.
They, they need to be on the same page.
Gotcha. So this is more so just specifically for meal creep?
Yes, sir. And it's, well, it's for the countywide drainage study, but, uh.
Don't want those pa, don't want those paths across.
All those dollars will be available for any drainage discussion. So, uh, we're, we're fishing out of the same barrel.
All right. Anything else additional business wise? Okay, Steve. Sure. All right. A need for executive session? Now we're talking.